A single residence property into a high-density group of five houses does not fit the character of the rest of the houses nearby. Simply taking a snapshot of this block on Google Maps shows that cramming five houses onto the existing lot does not look right. Two houses on the existing lot, sure. Three houses, okay. Five, no. Draw a rectangular box around my and my three closest neighbors' properties and you see that even our four lots fitting into this area is tight. Thank you for listening. Ken Iverson, and he did list his address, one six six eight Perkins Lane, Maple Plain.
He, in just a context for planning commission, um, he's not shown. He, he lives, he lives like over the next house going over on the corner of Perkins and Independence.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to go back again, request to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion.
Well, secondly.
All right. Um, six fifty-five is, uh, time.
All in favor?
All, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. Okay, so that is at six fifty-six right now then. Okay, now it's back to us again. Do we have any questions and concerns that need to be brought up within ourselves?
I've got a couple of questions. Mark, on this image here?
Yep.
Um, just give me a sense visually, are we, are we at scale here? Um, the footprint of the houses just appear to be close to, with the garage, three thousand square foot, footprints?
Those are big footprints, for sure. Yeah. I don't know if you guys know what that's drawn at or what your target size is, but maybe they could.
Well, I was just wondering, at scale, as I look at it, I mean, are we?
It is scaled. Those, those are pretty close. You can see in between the houses, you know, you're talking somewhere in the neighborhood of fifteen, well, fifteen feet is what they are.
Okay.
But, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. And you had mentioned emergency services are all good with?
Well, we're not all good. We need verification.
We need to be able to figure that out.
But, I mean, generally, the idea of that hammerhead works. I think, we don't love the bulb because it's not really super-functional, so it's, maybe it's a kind of modified version of something like this. But again, um, fire was concerned just about operationally being able to come in and turn. We would not maintain this street. Um, and so it's really more just that we have adequate turnaround for emergency access. But, the, um, the fire chief did note that the way that he would approach his fire probably doesn't go all the way in.
Right.
So.
Right. Good drag.
Yeah.
And then the retention ponds, are we, those aren't engineered yet? Or do we, are these engineered? This is?
They are.
This is the size?
Correct.
What it would take to be able to manage?
Yeah, and we have the stormwater calculations associated, so they did do a full hydraulic analysis and we have that. We've reviewed it. We made comments on it.
Okay.
Um, and so they'd have to address those comments, but this is probably relative size. Now, again, these are dry. These are, you know, kind of a biofiltration rather than a wet basin.
So they could be breached?
Yeah.
Yeah, with something big, but. Better than having a bunch of big old holes in them.
Is there, in the engineering, does it ultimately take water out to the storm sewer? Is it just?
Well, there's an emergency overflow. Um, I, I'd have to look again to see if these are tiled. Um, you can see there's those overland flows shown on the emergency. I don't see utilities. I'd have to just double check, but I didn't, I don't, I don't see where those have any kind of infrastructure inside.
Yeah, so I think everyone in the city knows nothing drains well around here, so making it drain so it doesn't impact the neighbors, that'd be great.
Be a big thing. The other question I got is on the driveway. Obviously, it's a very unique shape which must have been designed to accommodate some issues. Can you walk us through what those were or how did we get to this shape?
I, I honestly don't know the bulb part of it. The hammerhead is, is the kind of idea that you can maneuver apparatus around, right? So that would be the kind of, that hammerhead function. Um, on the bulb, it's, you know, I mean, a residential vehicle, um, would likely be able to turn around in that, but not, not like a truck.
So this, as opposed to one big cul-de-sac?
Right. The cul-de-sac, you know, doesn't wholly fit on that property as part of their issue. You know, if you get into a hundred and twenty-foot, a hundred-foot radius cul-de-sac, something that fire apparatus can turn around or standardize.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the, the other, the other part of that for the city is, we'd have to weigh, do we want it to look and feel like a road? Or do we want it to feel private and not like a road? And, you know, there's always this battle on private drives. I think when the city allowed oak, um, I was on the record as don't allow it. Um, it's a private driveway, but it looks in, you know, if it looks like a duck quacks like a duck, it's a duck. And well, that's what that is. We've already had requests from those residents saying, take it back over. It's a road.
Mm-hmm.
This one would function and look like a private road, private driveway, not a city. So, part of the cul-de-sac thing too for the city is just, we don't want it to look like a, a road. Um, so.
You know, yeah. I mean, it's a great product. Right, so I've done these in Chaska, and, you know, one of the projects you noted is one of them that I've done back in the day.
That's right. I, I didn't even think about that, but, yeah.
For Cutts.
I know, I know that now, yeah.
Yeah, so it's a great product and it, it's the least impactful community-wise, as opposed to four-unit, you know, multiple, and all sorts of movement happening and all sorts of things happening. But it's tricky because of the impact on the related properties. And that's where I think my concern would be, just wanting to make sure that we are honoring the neighbors and that those things are, are happening. Whatever those, not whatever those issues are, because you can't handle them all, but the important ones of, of water movement and that kind of thing.
Yeah, if I may, I can speak to that a little bit. Obviously, we haven't had an opportunity, um, to, to have an interaction with all the neighbors yet, partly because we don't know what we're necessarily putting in there. Um, so hopefully, as we get these answers, it allows us to give ours, ourselves a little more direction, then we can also come up with more ideas as to how we can make it work. But, um, if I can use a cliche, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. Um, you know, when you're talking about screening for proposed housing, that's going to be also good for the surrounding neighbors as well for privacy reasons. Um, and so, uh, Ms. Rettler mentioned, for example, um, you know, wanting to know where that road goes, and I, I, uh, I think, um, with, uh, Mr. Ballis and I, you know, having involvement on the planning commission at Orno, uh, we, we've heard these things too. Um, and we want to be proud of it when we're done. Um, so this is a little bit different than, you know, a big builder coming in and kicking in the door. We wanna, we wanna be proud of what we end up with. We want the neighbors to be proud of it too, and, uh, we don't want to feel like it's an overreach. And so the things that we haven't put together here, um, that are already being thought about is, for example, the termination of that, uh, road, um, abutting Ms. Rettler's property. You know, if you've put screening of trees at the end of that road, that blocks headlights from shining into a property. That bothers people if you see headlights. So you, those are the things you gotta think about, right? Um, also, you know, uh, there is the plant and replace that, that is, that, that every city has, um, but that doesn't mean we're gonna follow minimum standards for that. Uh, again, the, the more screening you have, the more enjoyment the property is going to have, uh, for, uh, these potential inhabitants, but also the surrounding neighbors. So, privacy's important for that as well. Um, the drainage basin, as, as, as mentioned, I think that's going to improve, uh, as, uh, Mr. Caltzis also mentioned. I mean, uh, yeah, we, we saw the property. We don't want to change the natural characteristics and slope that is already there, or at least minimize that, as well as, you know, we're trying to save as many trees as we can, which is still, you know, not easy, easily done, right? Um, but there's an exchange. And so, you know, the layout isn't necessarily ideal, but the op, the alternative would be to completely regrade the whole thing, and I don't think anybody wants that either. Um, so we're trying to follow the natural slope of the, of the lot as it is. Um, and I think that, working with engineering to try to make it work, um, it, it kind of resonates in that same way. And hopefully, it's, again, between the drainage, buried electrical, so those utilities don't stand out as an issue. It kind of becomes like an umpire in a baseball game. You don't notice them if they're not there unless they're a problem, and, um, then it's one less tree to fall on it to take the power out for the whole grid, you know? Um, so we're trying to, we're trying to do, uh, what's best for, for everybody besides just, you know, this particular proposal.
Right. The, um, what's, just to give me an idea of price point?
That's a good question. I mean, that's, that's the other reason why you try to go to a product like this, because the term affordable housing is a moving target, um, more, more than ever right now. Um, it's, it's become more, more affordable housing than affordable housing. We're not, um, we're not sure how it's gonna go, but I, I mean, to build a, um, to build single-family homes like these are much more expensive than just doing a four-unit town home. It's much more expensive, and that's why, you know, it makes it impossible to do four like this and still have it not end up exorbitantly expensive and out of market because of how expensive it is. Um, so that's why we really needed to try to fit five in. Um, and also, there was the, the direction that we received from council and commission that way as well, so we're trying to abide by the direction that we were given. Um, but to answer your question, I mean, candidly, I don't know if Mr. Caltzis had this in his deliberation of looking at like properties, but there is, uh, development right by Red Oak Golf Course in Minatrista, technically. Um, and it's just up the hill slightly that Gagne has put, had, I think they're finishing now. And those homes were very similar in style and feel to what we were envisioning for this. So slightly bigger developments, more like ten, and it goes back further, et cetera. But their price point was six fifty to eight fifty. Uh, so starting at six fifty, but once you put all the bells and whistles, more like eight fifty.
They were, they were able to spread all the land costs over?
Right.
Ten, and you gotta spread it over five.
Exactly. Yeah, and so that, you know, so that, that's exactly where you, the smaller the units, the harder it is to spread it all out, right?
Because the person, my question partly, you know, it's just, it's curious Snoopy, right?
Yeah.
And you're probably, my guess is you're closer to seven or eight, somewhere in there at the end of the day.
I would guess. Yeah, I think it depends.
And then, I just want to make sure that, you know, there's, there's lots of commitments. And sometimes these things can be a, a black hole when it comes to the site work and the commitments to make it right for the community and the, and the neighbors and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure that there's adequate funds that we're, you know, what we're getting into.
Yeah. Uh, you, you know, we've, we've, uh, tried to leave no stone unturned as far as how this goes. Again, we're not trying to do this on the cheap.
Mm-hmm.
Talked to a lot of builders with a lot of different ideas. Um, you know, cost per square foot above grade, all those things are discussions that we're having. We're certainly hearing loud and clear that we don't want two, two-story, you know, homes in there, that times five, right? Uh, that's why we really are trying to get as many walkouts to work, because that allows you to have some above-grade on the, on the walkout part. Um, but again, then that drives up the cost per square foot if you don't have that, right?
Right.
So those are the things that we're all talking through, uh, because again, like you mentioned, if, if you, if it, if it's so exorbitantly expensive to build, you start running out of room. And so, um, obviously, we don't know what we're doing, so we can't firm up on exactly how it's coming together until we go to final. But, uh, I think the feedback that, that you are providing tonight will help us provide a little more direction. Um, and, uh, you know, it, the feedback or in the opinion of the engineers that we've already employed to do this work that we have so far feels like it's feasible.
Yeah.
For sure.
Nice. Have you done product type like this before? I don't know.
Personally?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
I mean, professionally, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, is pervious pavement still being used?
Rain garden?
No pervious pavement.
As this proposed right now, there's none. I don't know if you had any plans, but not what's proposed.
But if there's a water problem, wouldn't the pervious pavement help to some degree?
I think, I mean, it's one way to reduce the amount of pond potentially, right, to put in permeable, but there's other issues with maintenance of permeable too, or pervious pavers. But, um, the, what they're proposing to do is accommodate all of the stormwater, both quality and rate control, which are the two areas that we look at using the, these basins, these infiltration basins. Uh, but they're gonna have to verify that, you know, they infiltrate, which our soils are tough, so there, you know, there's some challenges, which is probably why they're so big.
Because at one time, we did require that they at least look at that. And we do have several samples in Maple Plain, several years old. Many years old.
I would assume, and, and Mr. Caltzis, you, you might have enlightenment on this, but I, I would assume that once we go for final plat, it would be subject to review of the city engineering and things like that, on making sure that we have appropriate drainage and?
Well, yeah, I mean, we've reviewed this and have asked for some additional information, um, for verification, so yeah, between preliminary and final. But, I mean, generally, we think this is, is close, whether it's exactly or it needs to be tweaked. We determine that between now and final plat.
Mardell, do you have any more questions? Okay. Anybody else? Your concerns?
I think the concerns, excuse me. Sorry about that. Concerns I had initially, I think, were addressed. The biggest thing I think was, yeah, headlights, screening from the house to the north. The only other concern I would maybe have is that first lot, north lot, the side yard, depending on what would get built there, could get really tight to that. I think the rest of them all made a, maintain a pretty good distance, like, structure to structure.
Yeah, you're, you're talking this lot here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The side yard is kind of a rear yard, also.
And they're, they're walled, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, like, I'll make like a narrower footprint, just the way that lay, the plan would, maybe be better, but, um, that's kind of the, the only one that I think the lot lines are, seem difficult for what they're proposing. Ultimately, I think, to me, the, the drainage plan looks like it would be an improvement, provided it, engineering works.
Yeah.
Any more comments?
You know, when you go through on your, your permitting, like, none of these buildings will be this shape, right?
Yeah.
So at the end of the day, site sets and everything will be set, established, and drainage and swales and whatever will be.
Okay. Next, what do we do then? I'm asking for your assistance for the next thing.
I think we would be looking for a motion then to recommend approval.
Yeah, motion to recommend or motion to?
Okay.
Not recommend. It's up to the planning commission, but you would, you would want to make a motion if there's no other questions.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns before we make the motion? Okay, who would like to make the motion, to approve or deny?
So, one quick question. We would be recommending the PUD zoning?
So, in this case, we're recommending rezoning. We're recommending conditional use permit to allow a PUD, the general plan, which just goes with it, and a preliminary plat for the five-lot subdivision. So remember, this is preliminary. It would come back at final, but once we go preliminary, we're pretty much giving them the indication that we're gonna allow this, this development.
To go forward.
Yep.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the, um, PUD zoning and plat submitted in the packet presented to us.
Is there a second? All second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any notes?
All right, this will go to city council in, on June? Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh, okay.
It's like a nice project, guys.
Well, that was the heavy lift. If we can, we can cruise on the next one, hopefully.
Okay.
Or maybe not. Maybe there's a lot of questions on it. I guess I don't want to jump the gun.
Yeah. Thank you, everybody out there that came and voiced your concerns and questions. I appreciate that. Okay, for the commission, we have our second public hearing tonight. Um, again, Mark, do you want to go ahead and with the details on this one, please?
Yes, thank you. Uh, Madam Chair, Commissioners, this is a request, second one in, uh, two consecutive months, of a request. This one's a little bit different. This is a request to allow an amendment, uh, to modify the existing antennas on the tower located at fifty-one fifteen, uh, Industrial Street. So as I noted before, there's two towers on this subject site. I'm calling them now in my filing system because I, for so long, had so many of these. I have seven different CUP things since two thousand thirteen we've dealt with in this site, but, um, we have the east tower and the west tower. So the east one's on the right, west one's on the left. They're, you know, twenty feet apart. But this is the west tower. So last month, we considered something on the east tower. What we considered on the east tower was the addition, a new co-locator that hadn't been there before and the antennas that were associated with their proposed use. This is an existing user who's asking the city to consider allowing amendment. And I noted this one at the last one. I'm, I'm not gonna go crazy on this, um, on what this looks like, but when a person, when a cellphone company or a cellular communications tower owner contacts the city and says, I want to make a modification to the tower, does it require zoning approval or building permit approval? Um, they're very good at like, asking that question and then kind of sneaking, um, with that, trying to get a no, right? And what they say is, we're just swapping out antennas. That's, that's regulated by the FCC and, um, we're falling within the purview of their regulations, which means that you don't have to worry about it, we're just checking. So, what I used to say is, I need to see a set of plans so I can actually see what you're doing, um, because I don't trust that what you're doing is just to swap out. And it's not that they're, they're lying, it's that their, their swap out and my swap out are different. So, I asked them to provide a set of plans. I've now come up with a, um, like a twelve-question questionnaire, so not, I don't want the plans anymore. One, because they send me a forty-two page set of plans, and I don't want to waste your time, their time, looking through that to pull out the information, because what I'm looking for is, what are the size of the existing antennas? How many radios and other like little stick-me-on things do you have in this bank of antennas? What cabling are you putting in? And then what modifications are you making at the base of the tower? So, I have to go through the plans and read them and look at them and then figure out, and then I've gotta try to find the, the, the antenna schedule, which is this other little thing in the plans, try to figure out, okay, they got a thirty-one by forty-two inch and they're gonna put in a, anyway. So I came up with this questionnaire and I just said, fill this out. And so, they're filling it out, and I, I represent a bunch of cities, so I'm getting this, like, this antenna thing's like going crazy because of 5G. So everybody's changing everything. And it feels like we just did four LTE, but, um, anyway, so I asked that, and when they, they give it back to me, if they are just one-for-one, replacing the antennas, they're replacing the modules or the radio signal, uh, piece of that antenna, and they're, they're putting a fiber cable in instead of a, um, whatever, whatever their old technology cable was, that's fine. They can do that under our current CUPs, and we don't, we don't regulate that any more than we just, we just look to say, yeah, that makes sense, and you do fall under what we consider FCC. What I've noticed a lot of over the years is that they're taking smaller panels, making them bigger every time they change them out. And so we're going from two-foot tall by fourteen-inch and, uh, wide antennas, so something like this by like this, and now the antennas that they're proposing are eight feet tall. So, over time, if you do that everywhere on every bank of antennas, you're gonna just have this drastically different tower. Now, with that said, this tower, of every tower that I deal with, and this is like the greatest tower ever, because nobody knows where it is, you can't see it. There's one house across the street which has lived with it forever, but they can't really see it. So, it is kind of a great location for a tower if there ever was one, right? Um, but in any case, I asked them to fill this out. In this case, um, what they gave me back was their, their, um, they have three, what I'm gonna call thirty-inch panels on the tower. They have, I'm, uh, yeah, no, no, I'm sorry, take that back. They have six fifty-one inch panels and three ninety-six inch panels. So they have a total of nine. What they're proposing to do is put in three thirty-inch panels and six ninety-six. So they're increasing the overall square footage of their panels, probably by almost double the square footage, when you look at the math on that. So what I said to them is, I don't want to approve that, because I think you're increasing it, and I really think the city ought to document it. Um, that way, we know what we're doing, then if anybody ever really does have an objection, they're notice, the public gets noticed, they have an opportunity to address it, they can ask the city. US Planning Commission Council can say, wait a second, wow, how big is this? I'm not suggesting that this is bad or this is gonna be a problem for the city. I just like that it's documented somewhere, rather than in an email, somebody goes, yep, just, that's fine, you can swap out six pa, or nine panels for nine panels. Um, so that's why we're here tonight. It is somewhat just a technicality, but what I don't want to see is what we had happen last time where we went from twelve to thirty-six in ten years or twelve years, and nobody knew that, right? We didn't have any documentation.
Mm-hmm.
So that's why we're here. This particular one on the west side, they're looking at replacing the panels on the, on the lowest bank, so you can see that in my green outline here. So that bank of antennas, that's where they're modifying. Um, so they're gonna remove nine and replace nine antennas, but three of the antennas are, um, going down just a little bit, fifty inches to thirty inches, but six of the antennas are going up, um, to, from, from fifty to ninety-six. So, that's a, I mean, it's almost a doubling in the height of those antennas, right? So they're, they're going from five feet to eight, over eight feet. So with that, um, we reviewed it. They have very minimal other improvements being made. This really is a swap out. Um, I think that the city, um, can, consider the criteria for granting the conditional use permit amendment. In this case, it's the same criteria. Is it, is the, um, proposed use of the tower, in this case, to swap out an enlargement of those antennas, take away from reasonable use and enjoyment of the surrounding properties? Does it do anything in any way, shape, or form that we're not adequately mitigating? And again, this tower just doesn't have a need, um, and it, it fits probably just fine, but they, you know, they're going from thirty-inch antennas to eight foot, so ninety-six inch, I mean, that's a pretty big jump in the size of, um, six of those antennas anyway. So, that's the, the deal. They did not come tonight. I think they're out of Connecticut or something, this group. Um, yeah, it's very similar to the guy that came last time, right? They just go around and get all these entitled by cities. Um, so we've been dealing with a group that represents, in this case, Verizon.
So if we go ahead with this one, like we did last, the one last month, how soon will they come back and say, oh, we need to do it again and make it?
The technology changes just so fast, so this is going to 5G, but if they go to 6G and that space opens up, they'll be back.
But they'll be back.
Because when 3G was hot, we were doing a bunch of antennas in the late nineties, um, early two thousands, is when, you know, this was like ramping up. And then when four LTE or four G or whatever they call that came out in the mid-two thousand, like two thousand and ten, I don't know, ten, eight, nine, ten in there, every tower in America got redone.
Okay.
And now, here we are again.
Sounds like it's happening again.
And part of it is that 3G is going out altogether.
Okay.
So, a lot of these towers still deploy some 3G services for different aspects, and they're now getting rid of those. So they're making these changes to upgrade quite a bit of equipment, but you guys have seen it on your towers. Um, Independence has done three towers in the last, in the last six months. I have two in Watertown that are going right now. Victoria has them on their water tower that are swapped out. So it just, it's like everybody's just doing this right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
A little bit on the math, on page three and four, I know your math is right, I just
Yeah. No, it might not be, don't
So, page three, we're looking at the first three items at the bottom, these will be physically removed, removed, with the two up in top, and so, the physically removed, we've got two antennas leaving, I'm not sure what a radio is. That's a small
Yeah, it's a, I mean, it's a smaller device that sits behind the antenna.
It's still kind of an antenna for
It is, usually, those are, those are behind, if you look at them in diagram or if you look at them in space, but there is a little, like, radio signal antenna that helps project the
Got it. So, those will be physically installed, and then removing, it almost looks like there's, what, twelve, nineteen pieces of equipment being removed?
Yeah, well, so they're removing a coax cable, which goes up and down inside the tower, and then they're removing a hybrid cable, which I don't know what that is, but they're replacing that with, with two hyper, hyperflex cables. But, you know, if you look at the dimensions on those cables, you know, one's a seven-eighth inch coax, they're replacing that, but you're not gonna know, it goes up in the middle. And then, you've got the three, the, the six radios on the bottom side, they're removing three of those radios, and then, they're, you know, swapping the nine panels.
Okay. All right, I guess it makes sense, I, whatever.
It's a, yeah.
And this stuff physically does get removed, cables and the whole things, and they walk it off the site, and they're gone.
They're gone.
Okay.
And we do get a third-party report, we have it for this, so there's third, third-party structural, because they are increasing the wind load on the tower by increasing the size. So, we do have a signed third-party structural, which is one of our requirements. In this one, we do, a lot of times, they don't give it to me right away. We get it at, like, building part permit, these, these folks had it all ready to go. And then, this does get a building permit by the city, so it is permitted under a building permit.
Okay.
I don't think there's an inspection associated with that, but it's permitted.
So, do we make any money on them?
These are private towers. If we have antenna, we have antennas on the water tower from, is it T-Mobile? Yeah, we do have a lease agreement on those antennas. It's much more lucrative to put them on your tower. In this case, oh my God, why am I blanking on the name of this, of the owner of Ferguson?
Jack.
Jack, Ja, Jack's doing well on his towers, I'm assuming. 'Cause he owns two of them, and he's got ten, eight people or some, or six, three, four, five, yeah.
But they're one of the few sight-unseen towers around.
They are, they're great, they're a great tower.
And it's a great place in case anything happens.
It is, 'cause where does it
We don't want our water tower
Yeah.
hit with one either, so
Yeah. Yeah, this is one of the easiest ones I do ever, because it's just out of, out of sight, out of mind, right? I mean, like, the one on Highway twelve in Independence, that's a Verizon tower, it's that monopole just west of the intersection of County Road ninety, I don't know if anybody knows that one, but that one got denied twice by the city before it got approved. And, and even though it's out in Independence, you think nobody sees it, there's a ton of people who said, "I don't wanna see it." They all wanted that service, but nobody wanted the tower near them, so
This is our best kept secret, that's for sure.
It'd be better if you owned them, Mardell, I agree. Yeah. Yeah. The revenue on these, you know, I mean, I, I don't know what your guys' lease is, what it, you know what it is?
Uh, somewhere in that two-thousand-ish, maybe, per month.
Yeah, so that, that tells you, and you guys, you, I mean, I think you negotiated that fairly recently, but it keeps going up. I mean, cities are in about thirty thousand a year range for these lease agreements on city-owned equipment. It's less for private-owned ones, which is why they go to private-owned facilities if they can, you know? But water towers, a lot of cities regulate them to just water towers, so
So, you're saying Jack's coming out?
Yeah, I'm saying Jack's doing fine on his. I don't know his agreement, but I'm, Jack's a pretty savvy business guy, so
Happy face.
I'm assuming he's doing well on his two towers back there.
On his vacant land?
All right, with that, I will make, um, open it to the public hearing at seven twenty-nine. And since there's nobody here to talk about it, I will close it at seven thirty.
May I have a motion?
May I have a motion, thank you.
I'll make a motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And so, the official time of the closing?
Okay, the official time for closing would be now seven thirty-one.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is commission report and any other business.
We need to vote on it, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead.
I'll make the motion to recommend approval of the amendment for the tower.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, I will say, we're on to number seven, commission report and any other business. Coroza, do you have anything for us?
I do not.
Okay.
Did we notify them about the, the downtown If anybody had, I don't remember who We didn't? Okay.
Did we?
Just recall. If anybody is in the loop and happens to know, we had been planning on a joint meeting for the planning commission for downtown, that is still pending
Okay.
because of kind of a lack of movement there, so if you were in that loop, that's the update. If you weren't, sorry to confuse.
Okay.
What's considered downtown?
We have a vacant property downtown on Main Street, Kitty Corner from McGarry's. There's that white building that's kind of fallen in on itself, and then, right next to there is where the old city hall used to be, and the gas station.
Okay, forgetting space, okay.
So, we have some potential development happening there, yeah.
I was wondering why the window was all boarded up, so
Don't walk, I, I mean, I'd walk on the other side of the street, the roof is going in right now, it's not good.
All right, for other business, I also just
Correct, yeah, that white one, yeah.
For other business, I just wanna bring it up, this coming Saturday is the party in the park. If you're bored and have nothing else to do, join in the fun and the activities that is happening there. All right. I make a motion to close the meeting for tonight.
I'll second that.
Did I say that wrong?
You said you made the motion and you
Okay, I'm sorry. Anybody want to make a motion to close the meeting?
Oh, did you make the motion?
I, I did not, I thought she was, but I'll make the motion, I'll move to close the meeting.
I'll second it.
All right, good night, everybody.
Barb, great meeting, good job.
Uh, yeah, right. Thank you.
Thank you.